I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. One G under new business, discussion of township attorney.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Here.
Tanya Hogan?
Here.
Jerry Golka?
Here.
John DeBoyer?
Here.
Mark Burchard?
Here.
Maureen Borey, absent, excuse. Beverly Rose?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. One G under new business, discussion of township attorney.
I'll second.
Any discussion? What specifically are you looking for?
Here we go again, huh?
Well, this is time for discussion. You want to ambush us?
I have no discussion, Mr. Supervisor. I made my motion.
Okay. Roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Jerry Golka?
No.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Public comments? Do you want to open up public comments?
Go ahead. Public comment?
Peter Tambo, 9195 Maynard. I'd like to suggest that the board make a motion not to pay the invoices from Jerry's so-called training trips. He obviously didn't learn anything from them. He didn't follow proper procedure by having it approved by the board before taking them. He should also abstain from voting on any motion pertaining to these bills. He should be held responsible for these bills and be taken out of his salary. I would also suggest that everything that has been gone in the last eight months, that both he and the supervisor resign. Thank you.
Wendy, Harrison's Island. I love the principles of governance. I hope you all sign it and uphold these rules. You have seemed to forget that you work for us, the taxpayers. You were elected to do what we want. You represent us. You are supposed to listen to our concerns at meetings and answer our emails. Maureen's not here, but you can't pay her bills. That's just a vendetta against the sand pit and using our township money to pay her vendetta against the sand pit. Jerry, we don't want to pay for your retreats. You can go on the BSNA website. There's plenty of information for you online available to you. You need to stay in your office working for the township. And Paul, I am so stunned at all the unnecessary personal attorney bills you have racked up. I don't have time to go over each one. They're 16 pages. But you obviously are using Adidas Law Firm as your personal vendetta finder. We, the taxpayers, do not want to pay for this. We also would like Adidas Law Firm removed from our township payroll. We don't need two law firms, especially when all they do is personal work for the three of you. I am asking at this time that the three of you resign. You do nothing to help the people of this township. You don't listen to us. You have created a giant divide in our community with your lies and attacks on good, honest, hard-working people. You do your job according to the rules of this township. And Jerry, I'd like to congratulate you. You made it on YouTube. A man out of Chicago has named our township as the most hilarious treasure. It's a funny video, but it's not for us that are living this nightmare.
Jan DeMonte, 368 Greenwood Street, Clay Township. As a taxpayer, I think of all the winter mornings that I was outside in the dark scraping the ice off my windshield so I could get to work. We all work hard for our money. A trustee is supposed to be a good steward of our hard-earned money. So when I saw the current Clay Township budget, it angered me. Invoices from Addus Law Firm, who happens to be Supervisor Cassidy's friend, for legal expenses against the Algonax Sand Pit. A Clay Township needed tax-paying business. Trustee Maureen Borey was romantically involved with the owner. While the relationship was ongoing, she never criticized the company. But upon the owner ending his relationship with her, trustee Borey started using Clay Township resources to shut down his business, having inspectors try to find reasons. They found none. Having Addus Law Firm, who is not versed in right-to-farm laws, spend hours trying to find something, flying drones over his property, which is illegal. Trustee Borey, your personal life is none of my business until you use your position and Clay Township resources for your personal vengeance. Then it's every taxpayer's business. Your boyfriend jilted you. Now you want the taxpayers to pay the bill for your bruised ego. I respectfully ask the board to deny payment to Addus Law Firm. The taxpayers deserve better.
Mark Alletti, Harrison's Island. First, in terms of the clerk training. The clerk showed maturity and experience with a decision she had to make two weeks ago, which was very unpopular, but it was 100% correct. So any investment we put into the clerk now, short-term, will only benefit Clay Township in the long-term. In terms of the treasurer, you know, he shouldn't have any money spent on him until he can provide two things. One, he should be able to reconcile the budget in consecutive terms, not just a one-off. And two, as Mr. DeBoyer pointed out, he needs to pass an audit. Otherwise, no money should be spent on the treasurer. In terms of this pledge, I'm very suspicious of this pledge. I don't like when anyone likes to legislate morality. But four of you have acted admirably, so there's no reason for you to sign this pledge. The other three of you cannot sign this pledge with a clear conscience until you apologize to each other and, most importantly, to the public. And then lastly, in terms of the supervisor training, listen, if this is necessary, okay, you got to do it. But if it's unnecessary, no. The supervisor needs to be reprimanded for the chaos he's causing in this community, especially with how he spent OAM funds. Now, to go back to this pledge, I want to sit there and point out a few issues that we should be apologized for. You had Maureen waving at a public person as they were removed. You had Jerry asking for everyone to be removed when only half the audience was laughing at him. You had Paul use the supervisor's report not to tell the township good news, but to sit there and criticize public commentators. By the way, he did that to me before the meeting. He personally told me, "I don't speak facts," which is funny because all I do is quote sources. And I responded to him, saying, "Well, if I don't speak facts, call a town hall meeting. Let's have an open discussion." Communication is step one when you have a conflict. It's step one of conflict resolution is have communication. He doesn't want to do that. And lastly, in the meeting, Paul literally told Mr. DeBoyer, "I'm attacking you." 1,800, 1,900 people have witnessed that. So until these three apologize to you four and to us, I'm very suspicious of that pledge. So in summary, yes on the clerk, no on the treasurer. Pledge, dependent on more information, and the supervisor stuff, only if it's necessary. Thank you.
Clay Township is a general law township where the board does... The board, not the supervisor, employs and pays the township attorney. The board controls expenditures of public funds, including professional services. The township attorney is the board's attorney, not the supervisor's personal attorney. And the supervisor cannot direct legal work or obligate funds without board authorization. Mr. Cassidy, please tell the board and the taxpayers at which meetings these services, amounting to several thousand dollars for Addus Law Firm, were authorized by the board. If no such authorization exists, paying these invoices would be misappropriation of taxpayer funds. Unauthorized legal costs cannot lawfully be paid from township funds. Approximately $2,000 for legal services on a pig farm that our own building inspector said was compliant. Does this cover Maureen's drone footage, too? If you believe a supervisor does have unilateral authority to engage legal services, please provide the supporting statutes or laws in writing to this board and to the taxpayers. If you cannot, the responsibility to pay these invoices falls on you. Treasurer has not reconciled township bank statement since taking office, and the board has already approved 22 grand to a CPA firm to perform duties he was elected to do. Approving requests for over $4,000 in retreats and conferences would be irresponsible and a misuse of public funds. I urge the board to deny this request. I also want to highlight a disturbing Facebook post that Mr. Golka thought he was sending to the son of our previous treasurer, but instead sent it to her brother-in-law. In part, it reads, "Jerry Golka, Treasurer, Clay Township. If your mom would have got off her ass and did a little campaigning, she could have beaten me in the primary, showing he lost by 56 votes. No mailers, no door-to-door campaigning. Clearly identifying himself as a treasurer of Clay Township, he intended for Christie Son to read about his mother utterly despicable. Regarding the principles of governance pledge, if applied reactively, several board members would have violated this pledge. If the board is serious about this pledge, then I urge you to hold a town hall meeting..."
Absolutely. This is the time to talk on an agenda item, not to bash somebody. And it's all she did was bash someone so she can leave.
Jerry doesn't pay attention. Why don't you listen to him?
My name is Joseph Garten. I live at 22123.
That gentleman there can be removed, too. If not, I'm terminating the meeting. I'm ending the meeting.
So can you.
I don't think you have that authority.
Yeah, we do.
No, you don't.
Yeah, we do.
No, you don't.
What does this gentleman do?
This guy here just shouts out from the audience, right?
Then gavel him.
And him, too.
Then gavel him and take control. You haven't controlled the meeting since you've been in office. We're not going to throw citizens out every meeting because you're upset.
You're not telling me what to do.
Oh, yes, I am.
No, you're not.
Get control of the meeting.
Yeah. I'm telling them that we have them removed.
No, they don't need to be removed.
Are you going to remove them or not?
Welcome to America.
Are you going to remove them or not?
According to the Open Meetings Act, what we follow, we cannot just throw people out.
And you know what? When I tried to get her to stop, she wouldn't stop.
Use your gavel.
Okay, there you go.
That's the official rule.
Stop. Now throw her out.
It does not permit that, sir.
No.
Okay. All right. I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, you can run the meetings, Mike. That's fine.
You certainly can't.
Yeah.
Guess what? It's the First Amendment. That is exactly what this is. And I am here to speak on this. I am here to speak on Mr. Golka and how he bullies everyone in the town.
Again, you're not allowed to talk on this. This is not an agenda item.
What I am allowed to talk about...
You want to talk on an agenda item, talk on an agenda item.
Sure. Yell at me like I'm your child.
You are a child.
I pay your bills.
Listen, there's general public comments at the end of the meeting also.
Okay, I will speak about that then. But look, I came up here just to say that Kristi Hilton had made half as much as you made while she first got here. Half!
What do you think, John?
Big neck out.
What do you think?
Is this not on the agenda?
No, 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 no. Ask him to sit down.
It isn't removal.
It's on the agenda.
Just ask him to sit down.
Are we not paying his bills? That's on the agenda, correct? We're paying his bills?
You don't get to interject garbage under oath.
All right, I will wait my 15 minutes.
No, you can just leave.
No, I won't.
I'll tell you what. As far as I'm concerned, the meeting's adjourned.
Oh, no, it's not. No, it's not.
John, appoint a new chair.
I'll make a motion to appoint a new chair to the meeting.
I'll second. I'll second.
And recognize the supervisor walking out on an existing meeting, and it looks like maybe the treasurer.
If you still love a board, you can appoint a chair.
I nominate John DeBoyer.
I second.
Would you appoint?
John DeBoyer, if he'll take it.
I'll take it. Absolutely.
We can't, we can't.
We got to do it. We got to do it. No, no, we're going to accomplish a lot. We got to take a roll call, but don't worry.
Yes, we'll do another roll call.
No, I mean, I'm on the vote to appoint a new chair, Tanya, is what I meant.
Yes. I'm just getting my sheet out.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul left, Jerry left, Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes. Okay, so we'll continue on with the meeting. I apologize to everybody for what we just had to go through with our township supervisor. Any further public comments?
Bill Melton, Project Control Engineering. I did want to bring up a past situation. Not really a situation, but we had a past approval to perform certain project plans for the algae wheel. And so, at a certain time, there was another approval made to allow Benash to also work on the same project. However, PC is under an agreement with the board that was previously approved to carry on with our portion of what we're supposed to be designing for that plant. I just wanted to get confirmation that PC is still to be continued working on that plan before we continue to spend money and our resources without any compensation for those. So if the board pleases, I would like that to be added as you guys creating a new motion to give us direction on how we should be handling this.
Where are we at with that, John? I believe... Didn't the supervisor tell Mr. Monti to continue to move forward with the smaller-capacity plant?
Yes.
And essentially, they were going to bring that back with Benash's? Right.
With Benash's proposal, and we were going to do a comparison. So as far as I am aware, there's no reason for them to stop working because we're supposed to compare plans. I have not seen or heard from Benash since they were at that meeting.
That's the way I understood it, too. So, you know, I'm not sure where John's at, if he's continuing with it, but it sounds like he should be.
I think it was just more that we were just wanting to just reconfirm that that was the plan and that that's where we should be heading, because we have been doing that.
Yeah.
And, you know, at some point in time, we didn't want to, you know, be out there spending township money, you know, to pursue something that we're not supposed to be doing. So I just wanted to clear that up and make sure that we're okay to carry on.
That's the way I understood it. Mark, did you?
Yeah, that's what...
I wish our supervisor was here to confirm, but he's not.
Me, too. But thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Any other comments?
Hello, Artie Bryson, Clay Township. I just want to commend the trustees for taking control of the situation, and I think this meeting will get a few things done. And you forgot one thing, John.
Yeah. I don't think I need it. I hope I didn't. Okay, thank you. Any other further comments? Okay, so then we'll move on to bills payable. Motion for bills payable?
Okay. I... Oh, go ahead.
I can make... I'll make a motion for bills payable. I went through everything, and everything looks good. So I'll make a motion, bills payable in the amount of $167,440.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? I did have one question for Jerry, or maybe Tanya, you can help me. 208-000810762 for music in the park signs, Jerry Golka. Why are we paying Jerry Golka for music in the park signs?
Jerry paid out of pocket, and it was a reimbursement.
Okay.
As far as I... That's what was brought to us. He paid for the signs out of pocket and brought us the receipt and filled out a reimbursement form.
Okay.
Just so we all know, that's out of context of what he should be doing.
Correct.
Okay.
Was there... I mean, was there a specific reason why it went that way, or is just...
I couldn't tell you. It just came across my desk that way. I didn't receive an initial invoice for the signs, or else the township would have just paid for it.
I can see how that can happen, but it shouldn't have.
Right.
It was done before my knowledge of it.
Okay. Well, again, I wish Jerry was here to answer that question, but he's not. Okay, motion and support for bills payable. Roll call, please.
Roll call. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Okay, next up, consent agenda. Board approves 7/28/25 in-between meetings and minutes of our 7/28/25 meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items in it.
I will second that because I want a discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes. Has anybody ever seen the breakdown on the Manor Consortium $5,261?
I have not.
With the meetings, reconciliations through 6/30.
So that was one of my questions. If you look at that in-between meeting, Bill?
Absolutely.
It says reconciliation through June 30th. We did not approve Manor Consortium for reconciliation until July 28th.
In the original proposal for them, what we originally did, it was stated to have them work on reconciliation as well in anticipation to assist. It was presented more that they would be doing the budget, but it was in the motion.
I was under the impression it was budget and ARPA.
It was...
And then at our July 28th meeting, Jerry came back and asked for an additional $12,000 for reconciliation.
Correct. He did come back and ask for more, but it was in the original motion as well. He threw... They threw that in at the end for reconciliation. So that was board-approved, and that's why it was paid.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and support on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Roll call.
Okay. Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Next up is 1A unfinished business. Addus Law Firm invoices, or I'm sorry, Addis Law Firm invoices, $7,927.50. So I've got several questions on these, and I really wish our supervisor was here to answer these questions.
Well, we can make a statement on it.
My first concern is that almost all of these bills took place in the last fiscal year. These were all prior to July 1st. So we have a whole bunch of bills here that should have been included in the last budget year. Why are we seeing these now?
Because we just received them. We just received them.
You just received those?
We just received all of these bills.
I'm speaking from experience. Before the end of the budget year, I had to get all of the invoices submitted before they closed that budget year.
Absolutely.
And this is months later.
Yes.
And I'm not even sure if we can even amend the last year's budget.
Yeah, I don't know.
If we even approve these. It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Go ahead, Mark.
So do we have a contract with Addis Law Firm, signed by the supervisor?
I don't know.
If we don't have a contract, then all this is for nothing. But according to the policy and procedure manual, the supervisor does have a right to sign contracts with board approval.
I do not have a copy of a signed contract. I just have our meeting minutes where they approved him. I have not been given a copy of a signed contract by the supervisor.
But I also will say, Mark, it's township policy that the... Not only the supervisor, but anybody, department head, treasurer, clerk, has a $2,000 spending limit. $3,000 in the case of an emergency.
Yes. It's actually, they can only approve up to $1,000. Anything between $1,000 and $3,000, you have to have two board members agree to it.
Yeah, we're...
They have $999.
These bills collectively are four times... Almost four times what that spending limit is. And then I've got some issues with the actual things that were done by Addis Law Firm. I didn't know. Did we have a safety issue here in our board meetings?
That was news to me.
Okay.
I was not aware that this was something that was going to be discussed.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it was never brought to my attention that there was a safety issue.
So we paid Addis to review board meeting security. I didn't know that was an issue. To me, a lot of these are frivolous. Research supervisor appointing a sergeant in arms at our township board meetings? Really?
How much was that, anyway?
$227.
That's nuts.
Review township board meeting agendas? Really? I mean, our township supervisor is an attorney. We have to review agendas?
I mean, I don't think the rest of us go to the attorney to review the agendas.
Review treasurer's reports? Review Clay Township board meeting summary for Facebook? Research articles on Sheplers versus Mackinac Island? $245. You know, not to mention all the ferry ordered stuff, which was over $1,200. We didn't discuss that as a board. We never approved it.
There's even one on research on board resignations.
Yes.
I mean, to me, that's cut and dried. Somebody resigns, they resign. You shouldn't need a lawyer to figure that one out.
It's actually in the MTA book that we have multiple copies throughout the township that tells you what to do in that type of situation.
Yes.
Doesn't MTA have an attorney also?
You know, review DuPage complaint? I mean, is that research against a trustee applicant? I don't know. To me, it seems like a lot of personal agenda items, frivolous items. I don't know how you want to handle that. I mean, I believe we should contact our auditors initially to ask them about the bills being from the previous fiscal year, what they recommend.
Yes.
But I'll be honest with you, I got a problem paying some of these bills. I don't think they're warranted to use tax dollars to pay for these.
Well, here, on the original agenda that we broke... We broke this out of it. We were blindsided by it with no knowledge whatsoever on any of these invoices. I don't. I have no idea.
This is the first time I've seen it, Mark.
Yeah. So... And now they broke it out, gave us a little bit more of information, but basically, on each one of these items, I don't see any attorney briefs or any resolution to any of them. What's the outcome? It's just the basing of what they did. Okay. Where's the bottom line?
Well, all the research on the right-to-farm with Algonax Sand Supply, what was the opinion? Did we ever write that opinion?
No opinion, no.
So I don't know how the board wants to proceed with these bills, on all of them or some of them, or...
It's going to take some time to break them out, and we're going to pay some of them, but...
I'd rather have the auditors take a look at it first.
Yeah, so would I.
Before we commit.
I would agree with that, at least on the timeline issue. I mean, you know, we also have another township attorney that could review them, or an outside attorney could review them, to tell us, are they warranted? Should we pay them, or shouldn't we?
We do have a township attorney.
Yes, we do.
Christine Anderson, and maybe that would be the first place to start with her.
I can send all these over to her this afternoon and get an opinion from her on how we should move forward with these, and if it's even something we should be doing.
Okay. I think that's a good idea.
I'll make a motion that we send this stack over to Christine Anderson for review before we vote.
Could we also include in that motion, Bev, that we contact UHY to see what their opinion is on the past fiscal year bills and how we should handle them?
Absolutely. I'll add that.
Okay. Motion, do we have support?
I'll support.
Motion and support. Roll call, please.
Okay. Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Well, excuse me, all the research on the right to farm with Algonax Sand Supply, what was the opinion? Did we ever write that opinion?
No opinion, no.
So I don't know how the board wants to proceed with these bills, on all of them or some of them?
It's going to take some time to break them out if we're going to pay some of them, but.
I'd rather have the auditors take a look at it first.
Yeah, so would I.
Before we commit.
I would agree with that, at least on the timeline issue. I mean, you know, we also have another township attorney that could review them or an outside attorney could review them to tell us, are they warranted? Should we pay them or shouldn't we?
We do have a township attorney.
Yes, we do.
Christine Anderson, and maybe that would be the first place to start with her.
I can send all these over to her this afternoon and get an opinion from her on how we should move forward with these and if it's even something we should be doing.
Okay. I think that's a good idea.
I'll make a motion that we send this stack over to Christine Anderson for review before we vote.
Could we also include in that motion, Bev, that we contact UHY to see what their opinion is on the past fiscal year bills and how we should handle them?
Absolutely. I'll add that.
Okay. Motion, do we have support?
I'll support.
Motion and support. Roll call, please.
Okay. Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Next item up is Planning Commission webinar, Renewable Energy, Skip Tornow, $25. Looks like Skip wants to do a webinar for some Planning Commission training.
I'll agree with that.
Mark, you're the Planning Commission guy. You're good with it?
Yep, I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to approve the $25 for the webinar for the renewable energy to present it to the Planning Commission by Skip.
I'll support it. Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, 1C, assessing technician, Ms. Restivo, $150 to attend assessing technician course offered by the State Tax Commission.
Yes. This is something she has to have in order to be the assistant assessor. It's her state licensing class course.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessing technician for.
$25? No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for $25. I was looking for her name, but her name isn't on that, so.
Cheryl Restivo. I'll second.
Okay. Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 1D, assessing supervisor MTA two-day training course, $250 plus lodging. Split between the two different line items. So this is for Ms. Restivo again? Do you know anything about this?
Yes. So she is going to go, wants to do some MTA training. One is an assessing course, which would pertain to her assessing job, and the other is basic township governance to learn how to be, you know, get some information to be a strong deputy supervisor. I personally think this is good for her for wanting to go, to gain the information and the knowledge to hopefully be an asset to the township.
Okay.
She's willing to learn the actual job, so I'm all for learning the job and getting it done.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to approve MTA two-day training, $250 to be split between 101-257-960 and 101-171-960.
I'll second.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 1E, Treasurer BSNA Engaged Training, $750 plus lodging of 800, plus mileage of 940. This is the trip to.
This is the out of state.
Right? That we talked about at our last meeting?
Correct.
My opinion, this isn't a seminar that he should be attending at this point in time. We have too many things on the agenda, the budget for one. And I don't think he's going to get enough experience going to this webinar, this seminar. I've been to many of them, and a lot of them are talking and internetting with somebody. You don't know who he's interneting with.
Right.
I think until he can come to the board and say, "I've mastered reconciliation. I've mastered everything in the treasurer's office. I'm ready to expand on further." I think he should stay where he's at in the office.
And not only that, but BSA has many, many training seminars going on here in Michigan and in the city of Bath.
And virtual.
I can personally say, I was new to BSNA when I came in, and they have many resources, many resources.
As well as MTA.
Yes. To the point where if you have a question, you can go to the help center and you can receive step-by-step guidelines on how to do the job within an hour.
Well, you know, my issue is the class is 700 bucks, but the mileage and lodging is 1,800 bucks. I just feel like you could get this same training, I mean, I don't know this to be a fact, but I feel like you could get the same training a lot closer to home at a better price.
Yeah. I do know he has already attended two BSNA trainings.
Well, I can tell you just from my own research since Jerry took office, the training and miscellaneous, now it's two different budgets, but just his training miscellaneous is $22,000. If he goes to these classes, it's $26,900 just to train him on top of the $44,000. I'm not seeing this great pay cut. I'm not.
Yeah.
And for $22,000, he should be able to do the job. And if he wants to, you know, do everything within the treasurer's office and he masters it all and he wants to do something to expand his knowledge, I support that. I can't support this. I can't support this.
Not only that, is a small one, but you know, it's between October 6th and 9th. And I've been down to North Carolina a few times, and it's a two-day travel time down there and a two-day travel time back. So you look at them being out of the office for another, you know, four days.
Isn't it like the middle to the end of September is when we start our audit process?
Yes.
Sure is. It's a busy time.
It's an extremely busy time.
For the treasurer's office.
And we have a lot of work to do this year for that, so it's not really a good time to be leaving.
So my question is, and this kind of applies to all of the training that Jerry has requested, is so we hired Manor Consortium to come in and help with all of his reconciliation, but also wasn't part of that to help train him how to do it?
That's what I was understanding. I mean, he presented it that they are going to get caught up and teach him how to do it, so he should have no issues moving forward.
Okay. Okay, so item 1E, BSNA Engaged Training, do we have any motion to approve, to send the treasurer to that? If there is no motion, then the agenda item dies. Move on to 1F, MTA Treasurer Professional Development. So it looks like this is a training session in Frankenmuth, $842. Is Jerry's total cost, it looks like, registration, lodging, and mileage? And I'm not sure what this is for. This is Michigan Township's Association of Treasurers. It's not MTA, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, MTA Professional Development.
Okay.
Well, you have BSNA Engage, we're done with that.
Yeah.
And then Treasurer Professional Development Retreat, $367. I don't know why you put retreat down there.
Plus lodging and mileage.
So.
Well, according to Jerry's breakdown, it's $842.
Yeah, I saw that. I don't know if he has these mixed up or not.
Well, I think the registration is $367, and for whatever reason, he's got lodging and mileage figured in the additional amount. So 480 bucks for lodging and miles is what he's estimating, I guess.
So this treasurer's retreat is along the same lines as what I'm asking for. I'm not sure what they're providing him at this retreat. Like for mine, I looked at what they were offering and decided if it was worth it for me to go. I don't know what his agenda looks like, but it's along the, it's, MTA puts on different types of conferences and retreats every year for supervisors, clerks, trustees, to gain as much knowledge as possible. I can't speak on behalf of him for this, but I do know it's along the same lines as what I was requesting for. And that, I don't know what he'll be doing.
Anybody, where's the date at on these, October 1st and 2nd?
Yes. So it's still, it's in that same timeline that he would be gone with the BSNA.
I think that would be, actually, this would be fine. I don't have a problem with it. Needs some kind of training.
You said $22,000 worth. How much more are we going to train him? Until he sits in there and actually learns it. He has to, he has to submerge himself into the treasurer's office.
I understand that, yeah. I understand that.
Do we have a motion? No motion, and I guess 1F dies also. Move on to the next agenda item, 1G, Treasurer MMTA Fall Conference, $1,550 to include registration, lodging, and mileage. So this is the one that's at Shanty Creek, and it looks like the registration for that one is $399, if I read it right. So the remaining balance of that 1,550 is lodging and mileage. Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Yep, 1,550.
Now, this is not MTA. This is Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, so I'm not familiar with that at all.
So Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, they do offer a lot of great information and a lot of great courses that pertain to the job. I'm not sure if he's gone, like I don't know what all he's gone to before. I know these are great conferences to go to, but you know, he needs to be in the office. How are you going to know exactly what you need to learn unless you have been in the office figuring it out? I think these conferences are more to look at the agendas and pick out things that will most benefit your needs in the position and kind of choose those. That's how I look at mine anyways, but I can just tell you what it is. And that's September 21st through the 24th, so right in the middle of us preparing for our audit.
Any motion for the MMTA Treasurer Fall Conference? If not, 1G dies for lack of support. All right, let's move on to new business. Clay Township Principles of Governance Pledge. Tanya, can you tell us what you know about this?
So trustee Bory emailed me on Thursday and requested that this be on the agenda. She thinks it's a great idea for all of us to sign it. That's all I can say about it. I think, you know, we should be following these. We should be representing the township in a positive light and be advocating for the whole township. But she's not here to speak on behalf of this, so.
Well, it is in the Township Policy and Procedures Manual. That's where this came from.
Yes.
So it's already in there, and we've already taken an oath of office. And basically, it's not, it's a little different, but I don't know if it's a ploy to keep us quiet. I don't know. But I wouldn't have a problem signing it.
I wouldn't have a problem signing it.
I don't, we don't even have to sign it, to tell you the truth.
Yeah. I wouldn't have, I would be more than happy to sign it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything on there. I think it's all great stuff.
You know, do what we're supposed to be doing.
My question is, though, does it change anything?
That's a great question.
Are we all as board members going to adhere to it?
And you know, there's.
To me, it's like.
There's three missing ones that we can't attest for or speak on behalf of it at this point.
So how does the board want to proceed with this agenda item?
Kill it.
I have no problem signing this, none whatsoever.
I don't either. I mean, you know, it doesn't do any, I just think it's a lot of fluff or nothing, but I have no issue with it.
I think this was signed by the last board.
I believe it was. I believe it was.
So I'll make a motion that.
We adopt it?
We adopt it, and we should all sign it, and people should be held accountable for their actions.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have motion in support to sign the Principles of Governance by all seven board members, and I would hope adhere to it. Roll call.
Okay. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next up is 1B, DPW, S2/S4 Distribution Treatment Licensing Request for Multiple Employees. Lance, are you here?
Well, you were well hidden in the back, Lance.
Yes, this is request for them to write for their licenses. It is $70 each test for them to write this fall, and they have to be in and run through the mail by September 5th, so.
So it's a total of 280 bucks, and it's for Parksman, Ron Darga, Roger Boone, and Madison Campbell.
Correct.
Money well spent.
And this is something they need to move forward within the department, correct?
Yes.
It's education that pertains.
Education for the department.
For the department.
You know, something that's actually, it's recommended by Eagle. It's not something that is required, but it is recommended. More education that you get, the better off the department is.
Oh, I will make a motion to approve for the S2 and S4 Distribution Treatment Licensing Request for Parksman and Ron Darga, Roger Boone, and Madison Campbell.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion in support. $280, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
Next up is 1C, Assessing Continuing Education Classes for Bonnie Campbell, $70. Tanya, do you know anything about this one?
Yeah. So to be the assessor, she is required to get so many credit hours per year, and this is her continuing her education within the assessing department. Another, kind of to spin off of this slightly, I decided for this agenda to pull everybody's education out and make it its own agenda item. I don't know if that's how we want to do it moving forward or if we want it to all go on the consent agenda. Most of these items are things that our employees need to do for their positions that they hold or to move up within the department. And for these classes, this is mandatory for her to hold her license.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to bring it before the board as an individual agenda item that we, so we all know.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. We'll continue on that way, then. That's not an issue.
I think that's the way we did it in the past, but. So I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Actually, I was in her office earlier today, and she's pretty busy in there, so.
Oh, neither of that should be in here.
I will make a motion to approve the continuing education classes for Bonnie Campbell in the amount of $70.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1D is Clerk Quarterly Meeting for $53.
So since this is about me, I will not vote on this. Because I'm putting it on there because I want it. Yes. So there is Clerk's, there's quarterly clerks' meetings that are within St. Clair County for all the local clerks to get together and go over anything that is changing within the role of the clerk, any new information they're finding. It's a great networking thing to build relationships with other local clerks that are within our county. So that's why I'm requesting for Janet and I to go to the luncheon, to make contacts, and make sure like we're on the right path and we know of anything that might be changing within the county. within the county.
Who chairs that, by the way?
Who chairs that? I'll can let you know after I go to my first one.
Okay. You'll come back and tell us.
I can come back with that information for you.
Make a motion, we approve the Quarterly Clerks Meeting for $53 out of line out of 101-215-960.
I'll support that.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1E is Clerk MTA One Day Clerks Training, $230.
So once again, I won't vote on this because it's for me. So this is a clerks, you know, they call it a retreat. I had, I posted the agenda for the retreat within our agenda, so you guys could see why I was choosing that day to go to. It's going to be, they have elections that day and FOIA that day. I was just requesting to go to the one, the first day of the conference. It's jam-packed with a ton of information that will help me get through, you know, elections, FOIAs. And I was just, it is at the Bavarian Inn, but I was just going to drive up in the morning and come home that night and just get as much information as I could during the different sessions that they are offering that day.
I'll make a motion to support the MTA One Day Clerks Training for $230 out of
I'll support that.
Okay, motion in support. Just a question, do we still have a township vehicle that is available to, for you guys to travel?
So we do, we do not have one for the elected officials. Roman does have one for code enforcing, which him and Bonnie share. That is something we could look into. The previous board had sent it back, and honestly, with all the chaos of the change, that was not something I was going to look into right away. I figured it can kind of be on the back burner. I just wanted to get in and figure out my job instead of worrying about the township vehicle at the time.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thought crossed my mind when we look at mine.
Yes, that is something we can look into getting.
I was thinking about that myself.
As of right now, we don't have one for that.
I imagine you can, you can share it depending on Roman's schedule, if he has anything outstanding.
Sure.
And can use his own vehicle and pay him mileage on it.
Okay, so we have motion in support on the Clerk, MTA One Day Clerks Training. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 1F, DPW, Operating Engineers 324 Letter of Agreement. Tanya, can you shed any light on this one? Or Lance, I'm sorry?
This is something, the, through the last negotiations, there was one position that did not have a dollar amount that was put in the contract. So this will in turn put a dollar amount for the position of Senior Op and put in a incentive for an S1 license also.
Which is the top license you can get, correct? The S1?
Correct.
And that just something that was left out of the agreement. And as we are looking for new employment, we're finding that we need to offer these things in order to be competitive with the surrounding townships. So both of these will be very extremely helpful. Another thing with this, I did want to bring to the board's attention that will be coming forth probably at the next meeting. Lance and I have been doing some interviews, and we're running in, we've interviewed a couple of good candidates that we would really like to offer some positions that they do have adequate licensing for the positions. Their biggest hiccup, it basically is a deal breaker, is being able to offer benefits right away. That is something we can vote on as a board, to be able to offer them benefits right away. We can make that decision. So I just wanted to bring light to you guys that that could be something that we are going to look at in the very near future, to be able to retain new employees for these positions that we have vacant. And our water department is, they're working really hard right now because they're so short-staffed.
So is it currently now benefits are not available until probation period's up? Is that how it works?
Correct, yes.
And probation period is how long?
90 days.
So on this letter of agreement, obviously, the union is all in, fully understands the situation, supports wholeheartedly.
Yes. The union actually, you know, we kind of discussed the, the wage amount in between what is the crew leader's position and what is the utility to. And we kind of split the difference in between, and that's what they've kind of proposed, so...
We kind of worked hand in hand with them...
Yes.
...to form this, so that hopefully we can get our, our vacant positions filled.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the Operating Engineers 324 Letter of Agreement.
I'll support it. So motion in support, let's do a roll call on this one.
Okay. Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes. Motion carries, thanks Lance.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item is 1G, Discussion of Township Attorney. So I was a little bit concerned when I saw the breakdown in detail of all these legal bills. That's the first time I saw it. The dollar amount was one issue, but what they were for was even a bigger issue with me. As I stated earlier, my opinion, there's a lot of fruitless stuff here. There's also some things that, in my opinion, are personal agenda items. You know, when Addus was brought in, we were told that this was for ordinance-type things that he's, they were good with ordinances. But when I look at this, there's a lot of things we could have sent to our, our normal township attorney at a much lesser hourly rate. So I really have a problem with where this is went. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but...
I feel the same way.
I agree with you.
I mean, I was quite surprised when I saw the, the breakdown of those bills. I just, I think we, we need to take some action of some type on it. I'm not certain we even need, need two attorneys, to be honest with you anymore.
I don't, I mean...
Well, a lot of it should have been board-approved, none of it is. So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is that we, how many attorneys do you need in a township?
I would agree.
Right now, we got three.
I would agree.
One'll do.
I have to say, Christine, I've been working with her since the first day I came in office, I came into office, and she's extremely familiar with our township, extremely familiar with our ordinances. And she, you know, she's been our attorney for a while, and having, you know, coming in brand-new, having someone who knows, has been a great asset. So I don't, I don't see the need for two when we have one that has been working well for us and knows how our township operates.
I would agree 100%. Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm going to make a motion then. I want to make a motion that we terminate any future use of the Addus Law Firm for any township matters effective immediately, and we make Seabird and Delosky the exclusive township, township attorney for all township businesses, business moving forward.
Support.
Okay, motion in support. Let's do a roll call on that, please.
Okay, Tanya Hogan? Yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so I guess we're back to public comments. Any, any public comments? I got my gavel ready.
Got you, Greg.
Hi, guys, my name is Joseph Garten, and I guess what I was going to say has changed. Thank you, guys, thank you, guys, thank you, guys, for having common sense and all of a brain. And I just wanted to say publicly that Kristi Hilton had made half of what that man makes when she first started, never left the state, never did none of that for training, and our clerk is asking for $230 where our treasurer wants 15, $22,000, he said. It's insane, but thank you, guys, publicly, appreciate you, guys.
Pete Tammo again. Just want to compliment the board that we have in front of us now. That's the way a meeting should be run.
Boy, things change quick, don't they? Ari Bryson, 8356 South Channel, Planet Earth. I just want to mention a couple things. All, all these training items you have on the agenda, I think they should be on the agenda, but I would put them under the consent agenda, and then if anybody has questions or anything, you can pull them out, so you, you know, you don't have to, you know, it saves time. But, and I, I was always a big proponent on training, and, you know, the MTA and the Clerks Association, they do great jobs, and, and it's, they, it's very economically to use them for their resources, and they're great to go to for networking, like you, Tanya, I mean, it was crazy the past four years how elections changed like monthly, daily, and every clerk in the county, I saw their heads were spinning, I don't know how they did it. But it's very important that you keep up to date on, on all that stuff. And congratulations, you guys did a wonderful job today, and this is how a meeting should run, and I know it's been a while since we've had one like this, so congratulations, thank you.
Mark Coletti. First, I want to say thank you for Beverly Rose, her work for doing the Champion Ferry Ordinance. She went above and beyond responsibility of a trustee, she got some accolades in the Hurstons Island Fire, if any of you have seen it, but she, her actions went unheralded because of the chaos that was last meeting, so on behalf of all of us that supported the ordinance, I want to say thank you, Beverly. You're, you're cutting into my time, knock it off. I want to try to take a humorous approach to this Haida situation, so what I got here is the Clay Township Political Hockey Scoreboard. It's the Haida versus the Islanders. Now, Haida has one goal, we're going to use hockey rules, but that goal, we're asking it's beyond a review. The Islanders, we have four points for us. So, the Hurstons Island Transportation Authority claims some obscure bylaw allows them to only hold one meeting per year. Haida's singular point is questioned by Islanders for official review by the Clay Township trustees from two angles, just like in instant replay. First, how can Haida, a public body, operate without regular public opinion from the Islanders? Second, how can Haida's website claim to be a volunteer organization if they only meet once per year? So their one point is suspect. Now, the Islanders, we have four political points for us, and they're ironclad arguments. First, bylaw 2.11 states board members must attend three meetings per year. Haida Chair Harold Bain has eliminated meetings and is solely responsible for this bylaw violation. Bylaw 3.01, Section I, states Haida must have open public comments at the end of every meeting. Haida did not allow open public comments in December 2024, that was the only meeting in 18 months, by the way. And so again, how can Haida, a public body, operate without regular public input from the Islanders? Third, Haida's board voted unanimously, they're all unanimous at Haida, at the very first Haida meeting in the June 2020 to hold quarterly meetings. That's three points for the Islanders. And lastly, the grand slam homerun, whatever you want to call it, Michigan State Law, MCL 124.546, Section 2, clearly states Transportation Authority boards must meet at least once per quarter. So that's four for us, one for them. Now, I tried to handle this three, four months ago with Haida, and they, they blew us off. So I would ask that Beverly, Mark, and, I mean, John, if you want to take time, I don't think you and Harold will get along real well, but if you want to sit there and you see him at the planning commission, bring up, bring this up. He has no leg to stand on. Obviously, you see where it comes from at Haida, it's the same thing. So I ask that you guys try to take this seriously, so we Islanders can have a say in terms of how Haida operates. Thank you for your time.
Ari's going up again. Thank you.
Regarding the Principles of Governance Pledge, if applied retroactively, several board members would already have violated this pledge. So if the board is serious about taking this pledge, then I urge you to make a motion at the next meeting and have a town hall-type meeting to discuss the OHM contract. Mr. Cassidy claims the contract is legal, and Maureen says it wasn't a backroom deal. An actual conversation could help clear up confusion and give citizens the transparency we deserve. On December 16th, 2024, the board voted only to transfer $150,000 from the water fund to the general fund for feasibility study. That was a budget move. No authority was sought or granted to approve procurement, select a vendor, or authorize a supervisor to sign the contract. Yet on December 23rd, Maureen says she sent out bids, and that same day, OHM advisors submitted a contract thanking Cassidy for trusting them with the job. On December 30th, Cassidy signed it without prior board approval. At a May meeting, Maureen admitted, "We didn't even think, what do we need to go back to the board for approval for? It had to be signed before January 1st to use ARPA funds." Well, to me, that sounds like an intentional act to obtain ARPA funds illegally. Also, in May, John pointed out that OHM was working in early January before board approval. Cassidy replied, "They did work upon my signature, waiting for us to ratify, which we did ratify." But that statement raises a serious question. If Cassidy's December 30th signature made the contract valid for ARPA purposes, why did it need to be ratified in March? And if ratification was required, then the December contract was never valid, and payment should not have been made. In fact, the March 6th vote was on an already expired, previously signed contract, that's not lawful ratification. A township needs to, to be ratified if it was signed without or acted upon without the board prior approval. Without ratification, it's not valid. So we are left with this, a unauthorized signature, work performed before approval, and no valid ratification. That is the definition of a backroom deal. I'll close by asking again, who on this board will make a motion for a town hall meeting so both citizens and the board can finally have an open dialogue about the OHM contract? Transparency demands it. Thank you.
It's a short one, I know I was already up here. To piggyback on Mark's comments about Haida, it should also be noted that, you know, they haven't met in 18 months, but as a public authority, and they're required to do an audit every year, and I think it's been two years since they had an audit with, you know, and they're holding our public, our public funds, so just wanted to make that one point, too. Thank you.
Any further public comments? Now, we'll move on to board member comments.
I have one thing I'd like to put on the agenda for the next meeting. Champion Auto Ferry. They're soliciting... Some support from Maritime Administration, so if we can put that on the agenda, and I'm sure Jake Bryson can come in here and give us a presentation on that.
So is that something we'd like to formally invite him to, to attend, when it's on our agenda?
Yeah, right.
Good, Mark?
Good, thank you.
August 31st, from 8 till 12, the Clay Township Fire Force Association is holding their Pancake Breakfast at Hurstons Island Station. It's the only fundraiser they have through the year. Busy working with that.
Tanya?
Okay, so I do... Okay, so I do want to say, I reached out to OHM myself. I've been emailing with them back and forth, and we are setting up a date in September for them to come in. They're unavailable for the August 25th meeting, so I'm trying to work with their schedule to have them come in and explain everything. And I will contact Christine Anderson as well to have her review the contract again to make sure we're, you know, triple-checked for the legalities of the contract and the work that has been done. And other than that, that's pretty much it.
Good job, thank you.
On the issue of a town hall, I don't know, you know, how the board feels about that, if that's something we'd want to entertain at some point. It's probably a good idea. And then, secondly, I'd like to apologize to our community for the behavior of this board and how business has been conducted. To me, it's embarrassing, it really is. And I thank you three members for what you guys do. Secondly, just, or thirdly, just a little update on the, I met with Jerry, we talked at the last meeting about the Advantage Tech correspondence and all the info that he said was not available from the previous clerk. We, Jerry and I met in his office. He verified to me on his email that the correspondence was there from Advantage Tech. Everything that he needed from the previous treasurer is there in a tab, and Advantage Tech can transfer it over to his computer upon his request. If he was here, I was going to ask him if he's done it, because I think it's very important and beneficial to have that, that information. I hope he has, or I hope he will if he hasn't. But I wanted to update everybody on that, so everybody knew what took place at that meeting. Other than that, that's all I got. So next meeting is August 25th, 6:00 PM, here in the Township Board Meeting, or Township Hall.
No, it's here.
It's here?
Yeah.
It is here?
Yes, it is here.
With that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thanks for coming.